This meeting is being recorded by the Peabody School Committee's recording secretary. The matters listed below are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. If you could all join us, please rise for a moment of silence. I am going to turn this over to our interim superintendent, Dr. Mark Kerbel. I'd like to welcome Dr. Kerbel, and we're going to put him to work right away. So, he's going to take care of the introduction of students as they lead us in the pledge allegiance. Dr. Kerbel.
Hi, everyone. I'm so pleased to introduce two students from the Carroll School. Sophia Walsh and Caroline Lepin. And what I'd like to do is I'd like to tell you a little bit about them. Sophia is a fifth grader in Mr. McCallister Dino's class. Her favorite subject is art. Her favorite things to do: draw, read, FaceTime with her cousins, play video games. She's a member of the Girl Scout troop 76125 for six years. That's a commitment to Girl Scouts. And she dances at Dance with Dina, but we don't ask her to dance in front of us. And she has an older brother, Aiden, and then we'll talk about him in a minute, that goes to the Higgins Middle School. And next to her is Caroline Lepin. She's 11 years old and a fifth grader in Mr. Preston's class. Her favorite subject is math. Has an older brother, Jonathan, in the eighth grade at Higgins Middle School, and she plays on the travel soccer team. She loves to go skiing in the winter and travel with her family. And the favorite place she has visited is Iceland. And what I'd like to do is ask them to come forward and lead us in tonight's pledge of allegiance.
To the life of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wait, one sec, one sec.
We've got the Twitter.
Well, this one does fine. Get me close. No dancer.
I have one.
You've got Mom and Dad here, too, aren't you?
Yeah.
All right, Paris, come on.
My Mom and my Dad is here.
Come on.
Dad.
Oh, oh.
She had it easy.
I was just taking pictures.
Tell you the answer.
Dad.
All right, we're going to make you a star.
So, Caroline and Sophia, before you start, I want to talk, I want to ask about Aiden, the brother to Stan. Aiden Walsh is a, he's a Tenderfoot Scout, and he's working on his citizenship.
Citizenship in the community.
Citizenship in the community. So, we talked earlier, he eventually wants to be an Eagle Scout, and so happened that over the weekend I attended Eagle Scout ceremony, and such an amazing thing when someone becomes an Eagle Scout. So, Aiden, you're on your way. A lot to you, you're going to do it.
Thank you.
And Caroline?
So, for the Carroll School, we are doing a drive for the homeless cats and dogs. And, yeah. For the month of January, we're collecting donations for the animal shelter. The donations are: the food is. You can collect canned dog and cat food, dry puppy, dog, kitten and cat food, microwave rice jar and meat baby food, canned chicken, canned pumpkin, small soft training treats. If you want to donate gift cards, you can do Shaw's, Market Basket, Stop &amp; Shop, Target, Walmart, Walgreens, CVS, Home Depot, Petsmart, Petco, chewy.com, Amazon. Mobile gas cards, Staples, Visa, or AMX. And they can drop them off at any school in the city.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith, and thank you, girls.
So, can I, I want to thank you, and Tracy Smith, the principal of the Carroll School. Thank you for being here tonight. Wish you well on your, on your Peabody gifts for January.
Thank you.
And are there any questions from the committee members about where to contribute or how to help with this? Mr. Hockman?
Yeah, through you to Ms. Smith. Can we just get that list of places or items to donate on the website?
Sure. It's, I actually tweeted it out, and it's on all the Facebooks and the Moving Peabody Forward pages, too.
Thank you.
And it's a flyer went home to every student in the district, but yes, I will get one to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We're going to move into the approval of minutes.
Motion to approve regular school committee meeting minutes for December 9th, 2019.
Second. Okay. Motion made by Mrs. Carpenter, seconded by Mr. Onotis. Any questions? Okay. We're going to do a roll call.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Onotis?
Yes.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mr. Olympio?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And also, looking for a motion to approve the minutes of the organizational meeting.
Motion to approve organizational meeting dated January 6th, 2020.
Second.
Second, okay. Motion made by Mrs. Carpenter, seconded by Mr. Onotis.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Onotis?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mr. Olympio?
Yes.
Very good. Next, approval of bills.
Motion to approve warrant A, number 4385, dated January 14th, 2020, in the amount of $53,086.93, subject to audit.
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Carpenter, seconded by Mr. Olympio. Roll call vote?
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Onotis?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion to approve warrant B, number 4386, dated January 14th, 2020, the amount of $825,475.28, subject to audit.
Second.
Okay. We've heard the motion by Mrs. Carpenter, seconded by Mr. Olympio. Any questions? Okay. Roll call vote?
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Onotis?
Yes.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mr. Olympio?
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. Moving into continued business. The first item on the agenda is the MSBA Higgins Project, and I will give you an update on that. Right now, what we're working on, we just received word that the final change orders have been taken care of by the MSBA. That's one of the, one of the, one of the final actions that needs to take place for the project to be closed, so you will be hearing more about that in the next several weeks. Also, we are still working on some issues around the building. They will be tended to, including the landscaping, microphones, signage, and those will come up in due course, and you'll be notified of that progress as well. Any questions? The next item is FY '20 budget updates. Again, it's one of my agenda items. All I wanted to bring forward this evening was that I would like to see a schedule and a calendar for our work on the budget. I'm hoping that that process is going to begin earlier in the year as opposed to later. So, I'm just putting that out there for any, any additional discussion by the committee members, but I am hopeful that we will be able to begin those budget meetings and discussions much earlier than, than we usually do. Okay? Any, any comments or anything like that? Okay, thank you. Next item, again, is one of mine. It's, thank you for coming to the meeting. The Welch School feasibility appropriation. Currently, the status of the feasibility appropriation is that the Welch School Building Committee has had two meetings, one in January, I'm sorry, one in December after our December school committee meeting, and then again, we had a meeting in January. And at those two meetings, what we were doing was pulling the committee together, discussing the status of the project, explaining a lot of the intricacies of the MSBA process. We are currently entering into the, there are modules with the MSBA project, and we are going through module two, three, and four. You kind of go through them all together, and the first part of that is selecting an OPM, an owner's project manager. In order to do that, a selection board was approved by the school building committee. It is made up of five members of that school building committee, and their duty is to work with Mr. Dan Doucet and with Mr. Joe Scanlon on creating the language for the advertisement that will go into the state register seeking the services of an OPM. And we met on Monday. The language that goes into that, the requirements that we are looking for, all has to be approved by the MSBA, and it becomes important, not only in finding the right candidates for the, for the position of owner's project manager, but also it forms the basis of the selection board's ranking. The selection board will begin interviewing applicants after they apply for the position, and they will be judged and ranked according to criteria that the selection board is now working on. Once that process is done, we should hear in April who the candidate is, who is selected. It is done in conjunction with the MSBA, with our, our significant input. And then at that point, you move into another phase where you do the same, basically the same process to select a designer, and a designer is the architect. And then, once you have those two groups on board, they conduct a feasibility study, and they will do, they will, they will crunch the numbers and tell us what the possibilities are on the project for the Welch. So, that's the update for today. And if anybody has any questions, please feel free to, to speak with me. I'd be glad to answer it. It is a confusing process, the very beginning of it. There is a lot, a lot to it, but it's, it's a process designed to take care of a lot of preparation so that when the work begins, the work can move quickly. The next item on continuing business is the Emerson Park bus rooms. Mr. Hockman?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Dunn. I put this on the agenda a few months ago, and we had a conversation regarding this. I think we had the Director of Transportation present at that meeting, and there were some, what I thought were action items that were going to take place, and I was just, I just wanted to put this back in our agenda to see if any of that took place, and I don't know if we have a response to that. I know we've had some circumstances that have occurred in interim, so I just wanted to put it back on the radar and maybe ask Dr. Kerbel to review the, I believe it was the November 12th meeting of 2014?
2019. 2019.
2019, yeah. I'm sorry. So, it was either November 14 or October 31. I don't recall which one, but I think it was November 14.
And just as a point of information, I also know that the Traffic Division from the Police Department was looking into this as well, and working with staff.
That, that was one of the things that we had talked about, and I thought was an action item, was having Captain Richards involved in some manner, and so I'm just seeing where things stand at this point.
Okay. All right, so we will keep that on the agenda.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Public participation. If there's anyone here who would like to speak, the microphone is open. Mr. Hockman?
Good evening, Ms. Dunn. Good evening, Ms. Dunn. My name is Jared Hockman. I reside at 52 Ellsworth Road, Peabody. I come before you tonight as a founding, as a founding member and director of No Child Goes Hungry in Peabody. I'd like to go through a little history regarding this program, as this program and I have been the subject of conversation in recent school committee meetings. The No Child Goes Hungry program has provided backpacks filled with food to Peabody Public Schools students since October of 2017. This program, program began after Michelle Feld contacted me to discuss whether students that attended Peabody Public Schools would benefit from receiving a backpack filled with food on weekends. At that time, I did not have a response, so I started to research the subject. Michelle provided me with some literature that she'd received while she was in Florida, where she learned about a similar program. In my research, I learned that there are other states that have initiated, at the state level, programs that provide food to students on weekends. No Child Goes Hungry in Peabody and these other programs that I researched are designed to mimic the federally funded school nutrition programs in that we provide each student at least two items for breakfast, two protein items for lunch, at least two snacks, at least two pieces of fresh fruit, generally a juice box or a box of stabilized milk every weekend. In order to determine whether there was a need for a program of this type in Peabody, I scheduled a meeting and met with then's Assistant Superintendent Kara Murtagh to ask her how we could figure this out. Ms. Murtagh spoke to the elementary principals and guidance counselors and asked whether they knew if our students suffered food insecurity on weekends. I received a response almost immediately. Our school, school personnel had identified 120 students that attended just two of our eight elementary schools that go hungry on weekends. I was astonished to learn that we had so many children in need of food, such a basic necessity. At that time, I asked Ms. Murtagh to stop the inquiry, as I didn't know how we would service 120 kids per week, and frankly, I was scared to learn of how many other Peabody Public Schools students went hungry. We, or should I say "I," was now confronted with finding a funding source or sources to get this program off the ground. I reached out to several local organizations, the Peabody Education Foundation, Peabody Rotary Club, Peabody Lions Club, and others seeking financial help. I was overwhelmed with the response from each of these organizations and their members as to their generosity and speedy action to provide us with funding. I was also able to secure approximately 60 brand-new backpacks that had been donated by Gravoc. Since we had about half of the backpacks that we needed to start this program, and with so many children to feed, I went to social media asking people to donate new or gently-used backpacks so that we could use the money that we raised for food rather than for backpacks. The community response was incredible. I would arrive home daily to find bags and boxes filled with backpacks that were left on my front porch. I also met with people around the city to pick up backpacks that they either purchased or collected for this program. The Peabody Fire Department and the Peabody Police Department each organized a collection for backpacks. This response was heartwarming, but we still had 120 kids to feed and no food to offer them. My next step was to find food sources. I'm fortunate enough to know Cory Jackson, Cory Jackson, as we served together in the Peabody Rotary Club. He and the Director of the Haven from Hunger walked me through different ways to get food to provide to these kids on weekends, but perhaps more importantly, they encouraged me to help the families enroll at the Haven so that they would be eligible to receive food from the pantry on a regular basis. We continue to work with our students and their families to assist in this regard. Additionally, I reached out to Mayor Bettencourt to see if we could get fresh fruit donated from Brooksby Farm, as it is a municipally-owned and operated farm, and we needed fresh fruit for Peabody's own children. Mayor Bettencourt, without hesitation, authorized this donation, and to this day, we receive about four cases of apples from Brooksby Farm each week from September until around January or February or whenever they run out of fresh fruit. In the winter and spring, we purchase fruit from a wholesale provider at the Chelsea Market. I drive there to pick up the fruit each Thursday when we need it and drive it back to Peabody. Getting back to the inception of this program, I was able to secure backpacks and a food supply. We still needed space and volunteers to fill and deliver backpacks to schools and have them distributed to the students that we were hoping to help. At that time, Michelle and Dennis Feld offered a small room in a shed off of their flower business to store food and fill backpacks. They and their daughter Melissa set up shelving and organized the backpacks and donated food. On most Mondays or Tuesdays at that time, I would pick up food from various donors, load it into my truck, drive it to our space at Evans Flowers, unload it, and store it on the shelves. Generally speaking, a driver from Evans Flowers would pick up the apples from Brooksby Farm. We now needed volunteers to fill backpacks, so I started to solicit people to volunteer on Thursdays to help us fill backpacks, something I continue to do this day, to this day. In the beginning, we were only able to have about four people plus me to fill backpacks as the space was small. Almost every day, I would send messages, texts, placed phone calls, asking people to help us until we had enough volunteers each week. Back then, the delivery of backpacks, which is generally on Fridays, was done by Bill Linehan and Dennis Feld with a van supplied by Evans Flowers. Once we got the program off the ground, I asked Assistant Superintendent Murtagh to determine what need, if any, there was in the remaining six elementary schools for this program. In March of 2018, we started servicing approximately 275 students in all eight elementary schools. In the summer of 2019, we decided that we, we would provide backpacks on weekends throughout the summer and year-round as we wanted to supplement the summer food program that is being run out of the Peabody Institute library. Today, we service approximately 350 students each week in all eight elementary schools with backpacks filled with food every weekend. We needed more food, we needed more funding, we needed more volunteers, and we needed more backpacks. Fortunately for us, Ms. Murtagh was a huge supporter of No Child Goes Hungry in Peabody. She was one of our first volunteers to fill backpacks, and Kara didn't come alone. She brought her mother Carol, her aunts Mary and Karen, and her sister Kim. They were quickly dubbed quote-unquote "Team Murtagh," and they helped us fill backpacks whenever we asked, which at that time was about once a month. I bring up Team Murtagh not to single them out for volunteering, but for what came next. You see, Ms. Murtagh's Aunt Mary is an associate at Macy's of the North Shore Mall, and she heard that Macy's had a grant program to help nonprofit organizations. Aunt Mary gave us this information, and Kara and I wrote a grant to Macy's. We were lucky enough to win that grant, and that started a fabulous partnership with Macy's, who to this day is one of our biggest donors. In fact, they were also the source of a winter coat drive we held in December of 2018 and for which we received a grant again in 2019. The initial grant from Macy's and donations from the J.B. Thomas Leahy Foundation that we received in the summer of 2018 and again in the summer of 2019 provided No Child Goes Hungry in Peabody with financial stability and viability. With this program growing, we also needed more space. In March of 2018, we were invited to use a portion of the second level at the Haven from Hunger on Wall Street. We continue to use that space for packing backpacks, storing backpacks and food, excuse me, and food. With the increased number of students in schools that we service, we needed more volunteers to both fill backpacks and deliver backpacks. My pleas for more volunteers were answered by the tremendous people and students in Peabody. In the spring of 2018, I met with our guidance director, Mr. Quist, who informed me that approximately 40 Peabody Veterans Memorial High School students wanted a volunteer. I met with these students and quickly signed them up to volunteer in various capacities. We had a team assist with our social media presence, starting a Facebook page, Instagram account, Twitter account, and developing our logo. We had students that came on Thursdays to fill backpacks. We had other students from that group that conducted food and backpack drives. Some of them started volunteering for us to satisfy their community service requirement, but they kept coming back wanting to help more and more because they realized that they had the ability to have a direct impact on helping their friends and peers. Some of these students who are now in college still contact me and come back to volunteer in our program when they're home from school. I can proudly say that we have had members of most of the Peabody Veterans Memorial High School athletic teams volunteer for us, either individually but more frequently as teams. We have had several Boy Scout, Girl Scout, and Brownie troops help us fill backpacks. We have had Brownie and Girl School troops, Brownie and Girl Scout troops donate Girl Scout cookies to us, and Peabody Veteran Memorial High School cheerleaders helped us package those Girl Scout cookies so that we could distribute them to the children who receive backpacks. I sign off on about 80 hours of community service for Peabody Veterans Memorial High School, Higgins Middle School, St. Mary's of Lynn, Bishop Fenwick, Malden Catholic, and students who attend other schools every month. Approximately 50 percent of our volunteers, every Thursday, are school-aged, as we as an organization believe that it's important for our young people to understand that several of their peers are less fortunate than they are, and they have the power to help. On Fridays, we have a whole separate crew of volunteers to help deliver the filled backpacks to each elementary school. We have partnered with the Council on Aging, who provides us with a vehicle and a driver that we pay for, volunteers from PATV, the Parks and Recreation Department, the community high school students, and just individuals from around the city. This tremendous team carries approximately 350 backpacks each week from the second level at the Haven, loads them into vehicles, and we drive around the city to bring them to all eight elementary schools. This happens regardless of weather, so long as schools are open. We appreciate all of the staff members who touch these backpacks at our elementary schools every week to ensure that the students that we are serving actually receive the backpacks before they leave school every Friday. The cycle starts again as the students that receive the backpack filled with food on Friday return that backpack to school the following Monday or Tuesday, and we, but in reality, it's Bill Linehan, drives around the city to pick them up and return them to our space at the Haven. I also wanted to mention that No Child Goes Hungry in Peabody Corp. is a Massachusetts not-for-profit corporation that I filed with the Secretary of State's office around March of 2018. At that time, I also obtained a federal tax identification number for this corporation. Later that year, with the help of school committee, committee member Olympio, we applied for and obtained 501(c)(3) status with the Internal Revenue Service. We have a board of directors, and we, we have a board of directors, and we have regular board meetings. We have not directly received funds from Peabody Public Schools or the City of Peabody. I do not want to list all the sources of our funds for fear of missing some. However, I can tell you that we receive monetary contributions from local businesses, banks, foundations, religious organizations, and individuals from around the country. We continue to receive food donations from local hospitals, Girl Scout troops, businesses, individuals, and organizations. We continue to receive backpack donations from local businesses, organizations, hospitals, banks, and individuals. We receive a tremendous amount of support from our first responders. Fire Chief Daly and Police Chief Griffin are constantly communicating with me as to how each of their respective departments can help this program. When not called out on a fire to respond to, every Thursday, we have three firefighters that help fill backpacks at the Haven. We inspect all of the food that we put into our backpacks. We make sure that we fill backpacks with food that has not passed its expiration date. We make sure the packaging of each item is not compromised in any manner. We inspect every gently-used backpack that is donated. If it is unable to be sanitized, we discard it. If it is in good condition, after making several observations, it is sanitized and filled with food to be delivered to a student. We sanitize all backpacks on a regular basis. We work with Sharon Cameron of the Peabody Health Department and Brenda Wolf, our Director of School Nurses, to talk about and develop procedures that No Child Goes Hungry has implemented. In fact, we also work with Kristy DiLoreto of Allergy Asthma Awareness Initiative and provide allergy-friendly backpacks to those students who not only suffer from food insecurity but also suffer from allergies. Ms. DiLoreto and I met to review ingredient labels with an eye towards creating these allergy-friendly backpacks last summer. I can go on and on about how many people touch this program and how many people benefit from this program on a multitude of levels. I could tell you that my Fridays start by delivering apples, granola bars, and snacks to the Higgins Middle School, where I put these items to the Higgins Middle School, where I put these items in baskets on the ledge of the main office for students and staff to take as they need it. I then deliver backpacks to the main branch of the PBD Institute Library for our students who attend the access program and suffer from food insecurity. After that, I drive to the Haven to help bring backpacks downstairs and make sure that all of the backpacks get put on the proper vehicles to get to the right schools so that our students that suffer from food insecurity have something to eat each weekend. And when I have time after that, I go to the high school to help stock the pantry that is located in our health clinic. It is due to the tremendous amount of effort and time that I have invested in No Child Goes Hungry in PBD that I take offense when people in this committee and on the City Council offer criticism grounded in ignorance. For a city councilor to suggest that we are filling unsanitary backpacks with food that we receive from Planet Aid boxes is insulting and irresponsible. In fact, I see no purpose to those statements except to inflame. Perhaps the city councilor in question should have talked to me before appearing at the PBD School Committee meeting on November 26th and saying, quote, "My fear, to be honest with you, is you're taking backpacks from a bin and putting food in it for our students. I'll just leave it there," close quote. And for members of this committee to make a motion relative to the inclusion or exclusion of volunteers for private organizations that provide services to PBD public students, I say to you, please start up and run a program that is the size and magnitude of No Child Goes Hungry in PBD and donate thousands of your hours and time before you offer your opinion on this subject matter. My goal here is not to be contentious, but I will not be intimidated or bullied by members of this committee or members of the City Council. Perhaps your time would be better served leaving this program and other programs that provide benefits to our students alone. Thank you.
This is under public participation. Okay. Right there.
Thank you, Mr. Hockman, and I just want to say that that committee, the work that's done, has made a difference in our kids, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Anybody else that would like to speak during public participation? The microphone is open. Okay, we'll now go to the superintendent's report, and I will turn it over to Dr. Kerbel for your report, Dr. Kerbel.
Thank you. Thank you. Jared, that was very moving, and thank you for what you're doing for our children in PBD.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent.
I had some opening remarks, and I was going to talk at length about my entry and my impressions, but I've changed that, and I'm changing that because everywhere I go, Kara Murtagh, Superintendent Kara Murtagh, had her fingers in everything, and she touched the lives of everyone. And I've been in education for a long time. I don't think anyone has touched the lives of so many people other than she has. So I met two students today, Government Day. Kara Murtagh went to the track meet. She went to the pep rally. And she was just everywhere, touched the lives of so many people. So it just outweighs more than I can talk about my own entry, and I think that by doing so, I just can't live up to it. So let me just say that I've said I'm sorry to so many people for their loss. You would not, you would just be overwhelmed. And I really want to thank all the people in PBD that work for our kids and students because they're really trying so hard. Want to thank Marjorie Macarelli and June Williams Brothers, who run the show at Central Office. Dr. Chris Ford, who's doing two jobs, and he doesn't go to bed, and he's answering. I put out text messages so I can dump and go to bed, and then he answers it. Makes it worse. I mean, I can't answer. I say, "Do not respond." You know, Joe Scanlon and I and Steve Early are working in terms of the budget and personnel. I just want to thank them. You know, what happens is that in Central Office, there's a downstairs, and you know, it's like, who's behind that screen, like a Wizard of Oz, and all these people are working, we don't see them. They're really helping the district go forward. So there's two plans of action for me personally, and one has to do with this caring and healing plan for the district, and tomorrow night, we have a healing plan committee that's meeting here in the cafeteria, four o'clock tomorrow, and we sent out a notice thanks to everyone. We'd like to get about 40 to 50 people, not the 10,000 people that we are open. Looking for anybody that found out this morning that students want to show up, and I think that's pretty good. Staff want to show up as well because it's part of the healing process, they want to gift others. So they're welcome. And I'm not going to go too much into the healing plan, other than things are in operation. And I try to encourage anyone who has certain feelings, including the people on this committee, about the loss they had for Kara, or Judy at the high school, or Jackson at the middle school. Okay? If you have these feelings, we have someone that you can talk to. Kristin Kowalski is on a grant from Care Dimensions, is available to the district. She's wonderful. Had an opportunity to just talk to people, and I found myself overcome with their emotions, and I'm trying to balance my own. And I give a return to Marjorie and saying, "I need a speaker, Kristin." So I encouraged you, and I'm going to send you her number, I'm going to encourage the committee to call her because you all are touched by the loss of Kara Murtagh. Okay? Do that for yourself. Don't think, "Oh, it's great." I'm not great. You moved on. No, you haven't. And what I learned through this process is that I'm not worried about this month, next month. I'm worried about next year. Okay? So help yourself now so we can help the district heal. I want to talk about the strategic plan because path number two, it's two paths. One is I have to, the world was a business. We have to educate, we have to educate kids like Aiden and all his friends. And so teaching and learning is so important, and one of the things that's critically important is a strategic plan and a vision as we move forward. Now, you know, I worked on the district review team that was here two years ago. We're resurrecting that report, passing it out. We will use that as part of our process for developing a strategic plan. We're working with Seaside Consultants, Bruce Bates, we met with him recently. So when we talk about the strategic plan, everyone's going to say, "What about Kara Murtagh's vision? You're going to have to trust me. It won't get lost." And I was going to talk a lot about that, but I won't. All I'm going to say is that her plan for the five Cs will memorialize, we'll call it something, we'll call it something like the Murtagh District Vision Model, referred to Figure One. As we adopt it and move on, we'll develop a district framework. That vision is different than strategic plan. Strategic plan is based upon challenges and how to address the challenges so that we can become the city that we want to be educationally. Not to minimize achievement, but we have to, there's a benchmark that we have to reach, and we'll reach it, and that's what you do with a strategic plan. I'll tell you more about that next time, and I'll send you, I think I sent you a little bit of an email to whet your whistle. So just finally, I just want to thank all the people that have been so gracious. I'm very grateful for being here. I've been, I, it's so really funny, people that I have coached, one sitting in the audience, Tommy D'Amato was one of the greatest running backs ever in PBD, and all of the people that I have worked with or coached, whether it's their uncle, their cousin, their brother. It's so amazing how they have these jobs in PBD, and I'm just so grateful to be here and thank you. I'm done. Thank you very much. I'm sorry, I have other things I need to tend to.
I think we should just, stop talking about yourselves.
Okay. So we have the High School 2020-2021 Program of Studies that was in your packet. Are there any comments or any questions for Dr. Ward that was here?
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Dunn, and then I'll go, Mrs. Dunn. Thank you.
Thank you. I do have a question, and it's about the foreign languages. Will we be continuing the German program that the students are taking online?
The opportunities available, because we've done a lot of research through last year's work, and if there are kids that have an interest, yes, there are online opportunities that they can do ones that are beyond the program of studies. So yes, those are out there.
Okay. The reason I asked is, is it in that program of studies so that they will sign up for it so that you know of the interest?
It's not written, and not in the program of studies, but it is something that they're discussing at the guidance meetings with students if they do have an interest to do that. It's something that they're aware of in the knowledge, in the knowledge sense, yes.
And are there any other, I know there is a change with the dual enrollment.
Oh, yeah, I am very pleased to share with you all that there have been a lot, well, first of all, let me recognize all the department heads at the high school for the work they've done over the last several months to basically reconstitute the program of studies and the opportunities that students have for learning at the high school. They've done a super job with it. We had our first presentation to the Rising 10th Grade this afternoon. We're going to see the Rising 11th Grade tomorrow, the Rising Senior Class on Thursday, and all of the Higgins students a week from tonight, so that all the kids that are coming up to high school have a really good sense of the program of studies. All the kids are learning how to enter their course requests into the Aspen Portal. We're teaching them how to do that, and they're really going to take some ownership over their learning. There are, dual enrollment is just one brush stroke on a lovely painting that I hope everybody in the community takes the time to look at. This is a new program that we've just started. Dual enrollment is an opportunity for students in the 10th and 11th Grade to take a course during the school day at the high school and simultaneously earn credit at the high school toward our graduation, but also earn credit toward a college of their choice. Salem State is the one that we've established this with. There are two professors that are going to be teaching at our high school during the school day, co-teaching with one of our teachers. One is a political science class in social studies, and the other one is a writing class in English, and the social studies class will be happening in the fall, the English class in the summer. You're welcome to meet Dr. Logan Puck. He's going to be meeting our social studies department in a couple of weeks, and he'll be paired up with one of our teachers. Luckily, the master schedule for the high school matches with the schedule over at Salem State, so the professors can come back and forth conveniently with the classes that are teaching over there, and they're going to include part of their workday being with us. We're hoping to expand this in the future, but it's a great opportunity for kids to get, you know, as they walk out the door across graduation, they're already walking into a college with some of their transcript already constructed. This is beyond the AP program, which is also very strong. There's, you know, 15 or 16 AP classes that run every year at the high school. Very proud of that. We'll be talking more about that with the upperclassmen tomorrow and on Thursday, and those kids, but those kids have to take the AP exams, as you know, and they have to get a three, four, or five on them to earn that college credit. Dual enrollment will happen in our high school, whether or not, I mean, they have to get a B or better in the course that they're taking, but they still can get that credit before taking a big exam and before the end of the school year. So it's a really great opportunity. Any other questions? I'm very excited about that. It's really been, it's really been a lot of fun to share that with the kids, and the department heads did a slammin' job today with the ninth graders. The kids were really excited when they left, and they've really gotten good at it. So we're very pleased about what's going to be going on at the high school next year, and the kids are going to be having some great opportunities.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lord. That was terrific. Okay. Turn it back to you, Dr. Kerbel.
Okay. Here we go. We have donations. Want to thank the corporations or the schools that donated. So we have the, so we have the LUDAS Environmental, $75 to the district. ExxonMobil Education Alliance paid $500 to the Thomas Carroll Elementary School. So I'm asking schools to need to accept the donations.
Motion to receive with gratitude and send letters expressing our thanks. Okay. You've heard the motion by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mr. Olympio for approval and acceptance with thanks. Unanimous vote. Thank you.
My field trip request, we have the, let's see, PBD High School to Europe, April 2021 senior packet. The high school track, I mean, yeah, this high school track team to some students to New York City, March 12th through 13th, 2020, and then members of the track team to Greensboro, North Carolina, June 17th and 18th. I believe these are special, these are championship, these are like, who am I?
The Nationals, Nationals for Track. They're the Nationals for Track. Yep.
It's a national championship track competition in these particular venues, and I think that you have to qualify for these meets, but I believe approving these field trips ahead of time is a prudent thing to do.
I guess this is something that happens every year, and the kids go down there, and we're just kind of preempting that some of our kids are going to qualify for this, and they'd like the opportunity to be able to go, and they won't know that until maybe a week or two prior to those dates.
All right, let's take those one at a time. First one is the field trip to Europe, April of 2021. I'll open that up for discussion or for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Further motion made by Mr. Arnotis for approval of the high school trip to Europe in April 2021, seconded by Mrs. Dunn. Any discussion? Let's have a roll call vote.
Just one comment. Mr. Barron will be, anybody who wants to come to the cafeteria at the high school on this Thursday evening at 6:00, he's going to be sharing with everybody who has an interest about what that trip's all about.
Can I just ask, where are they going in Europe?
Oh, they're going to, it's veterans, it's World War II, Belgium, Normandy. It's a pretty cool trip.
Yeah. She's awesome. Yeah. Sorry.
Great. She is awesome. She is awesome.
I took this exact same trip in high school.
Oh, did you?
Yep, with Ms. Gore.
Have fun.
It's well worth it. Oh, believe me, yeah, if you can't get a ticket, get one now, I'll tell you that. Sign me up.
All right. All right, any other thoughts or comments? Roll call vote, please, on acceptance.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Arnotis?
Yes.
Mrs. Coppender?
Yes.
Mr. Hockman?
Abstain.
Ms. Olympio?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, now we'll go to the PBD Veterans Memorial High School Track Program or Track Participants to New York City for March 12th and 13th, 2020. I'd open that up to the committee.
Motion to approve.
Okay. Further motion for approval by Mr. Arnotis, seconded by Mr. Miko. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Arnotis?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Hockman?
Abstain.
Ms. Olympio?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and the final one is the PBD Veterans Memorial High School Track Participants to Greensboro, North Carolina, June 17th and 18th of 2020. Motion made by Mr. Arnotis, seconded by Mrs. Coppender. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Arnotis? Yes.
Coppender?
Yes.
Mr. Hockman?
Abstain.
Ms. Olympio?
Yes.
Yes.
Great, I think we have one more item. Dr. Kerbel is there.
North Shore Education Consortium, 2019 annual report, Virginia packet that was sent to the Department of Ed and posted on the NEC website. If you have questions, I would ask you to read, then please email to me, and what I'll do is then answer those and then report back next time.
Great. Mr.? Yep, thank you, Dr. Kerbel. Mr. Miko?
Through the chair, Dr. Kerbel, in the committee. While we were on field trip requests, I know it's not on the agenda now, but I was wondering if we can put it on for the next meeting. The DECA program is going to Boston on February 27th, and in previous years, we've given two buses for a one-way trip into Boston. They usually have the ride back home from their parents or guardians. So if we could just put that on for the next agenda on the field trip requests, again, that's on February 27th, and it's for two buses, one way only into Boston, if we could.
Thank you, Mr. Miko, Mrs. Macarelli. We can get that on the agenda next time?
Thank you.
Thank you. Sure, absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miko.
One last item. This has to do with John Rajidus and Logan La Masny being Project 351 ambassadors. So I just want to just read a little bit about the ambassador program, and, um, Logan La Masny, you know, and everyone's connected, so her grandfather, I think I played basketball with him a couple of times. So Ted Bucy, principal of the Higgins Middle School, was pleased to announce the selection of John and Logan to the role of puberty Project 351 ambassadors for 2020. The Project 351 celebrates the ethic of service and youth leadership by bringing together eighth graders from across the state, educators, service organization, and private sector partners with the goal of transforming communities and uniting the Commonwealth through a shared purpose. So just give you a little heads up, you're going to go, I'll report back about how it went, and tell you a little bit more about these two. And I talked to Todd Bucy, I guess there's a number of folks from, uh, the Higgins Middle School that go, and I know that Kara Mertag was involved in this program as well, talked to Todd, and, um, it's special for them this, this ad. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Kerbel, and yeah, I think we would love to maybe invite John and Logan to a future meeting. Unfortunately, I think many of us know them personally, and they're two terrific, spectacular young men, you know, young man and young woman, so it'll be great to get them. And I just wanted to say, uh, Dr. Kerbel, um, you know, and just hearing you speak, and I've gotten to know you pretty well over the last couple of weeks, I just want to thank you for being here for us, the members here of the school committee. Thank you for being here for our, our kids in our district and for our community. You've brought a great deal of compassion and passion for our city, and, um, you know, without question to me, you were the right person at the right time for us. Uh, it's great that with your background, your puberty roots, um, you know, your amazing background in a whole variety of ways, now to have you assisting us, uh, for these next several months, uh, I think is going to make a world of difference for our community. I just wanted to, to thank you for being there for the city of P- puberty and for being there for us. Um, and just already the, the healing and caring program that you've brought in, I know has helped a number of people, and, um, I just wanted to thank you for, for being here for this. Thank you. Um, there's one additional item. Uh, Dr. Lord, I wanted to turn this over to you. You've worked extremely hard on making, I think, a positive change or a potential change to, uh, the high school, and I do, I do believe it has to be, um, voted on by us, and I just wanted to turn it over to you, if you can maybe speak about the lunch program.
Yeah, I'll, um, I'll also highlight, uh, Mary Henry, President Uni, we worked together on this for the last several months. Uh, when the NIAS team came to visit, one of the things that they look at is all of our permits, and they found that the high school's cafeteria permit only allowed for 200 students. We knew that was wrong.
Yes.
So thankfully, someone in Sevigny Hall came over and reestablished what the correct number should be, and it's actually 760 kids in the caf, so we're good. And, uh, anyway, so that started a whole conversation. What's happening right now is the period five class for about a third of the student body is 20 minutes of instruction, then they go to lunch, and then 20 minutes of instruction again. The lunches are around 22 minutes long for the kids, and so the solution that we proposed, and a lot of people have gotten behind, is to have two lunches now at the high school during period five, so it's either kids go to lunch and then 45 minutes of instruction, or they have the 45 minutes of instruction and they go to lunch. This is going to free up about 20 minutes in between both lunches so that, first of all, the staff in the cafe can restock, which is, they're just constantly feeding kids for the three lunches, so now they're going to, a little breather there in the middle. There are several groups, uh, that require a quiet lunchtime without several hundred kids, and that's going to happen in that little break in the middle. The disruption in the classrooms will be a single disruption. The third floor is now going to all go to first lunch, and the second, first and second floor are going to go to second lunch. What's going to happen is all the kids are going to, at the end of period four, um, they're going to go to their classes, there'll be a single disruption when all the kids in the cafeteria go from the cafeteria up to the third floor, they should be going up the stairways, and they won't be disrupting the classes that are, that are happening right now. The, um, the teachers are going to have a 30-minute lunch, which is now part of their contract, which they haven't had in I don't know how many years, help me out with that, Mary, a long time.
Wow. Since the class of 72.
Ah, so anyway, this was a big win-win for a lot of people, and we're ready to pull the trigger on it the first day of second semester. Um, and since this is a change of working conditions, this is a little new ground for me. Uh, Mary has already signed off on a memorandum of agreement, and I believe this organization, because of this change in work conditions also, has to vote off on this two-lunch thing. Did I say that right?
I'm, I'm, no.
Okay. So, um, yeah, so anyway, so what I guess I'm asking to do, and I, you have to help with the protocol here, but, um, we need to approve a, a two-lunch program at the high school that's already been agreed upon by the teachers union.
Yep. So, thank you, Dr. Lord, thank you, Mrs. Henry. So it's already been agreed, it's in, it's memorialized in writing. I think we just moved, uh, ident, entertain a motion to just accept, uh, the, uh, new schedule, and, um...
I'll make a motion to, um, make the recommendation of Assistant Superintendent Dr. Lord.
Great. Further motion for approval by Mr. Amico, seconded by Mr. Arnotis. Any questions on it? Mr. Hockman?
Um, do we, do we get to see a copy? I mean, I, I, this is pretty irregular for us to vote on a document that amends our contract without looking at it.
Sure.
Is there any urgency in?
Uh, we're going to start second semesters on Monday, the 27th. Our school committee meeting is the next day.
We even have an executive session scheduled after this. I'd be okay, if everyone else is okay, dealing with it there. Uh, it is a negotiation, so it's appropriate for executive session. I just have a little, respectfully, difficulty voting on blind.
I'll withdraw my...
That's reasonable, so how about, how about we just hold it till the, till the executive session meeting following this meeting?
And we can, if I may, report out from executive session just for the purpose of reporting the vote on that if it needs to get done tonight.
Okay. Yeah, because I think...
Whatever's appropriate.
Yeah, we're looking to get this for January 27th. Yeah, I don't think we meet again until January 28th, so yeah, I'd like to maybe report on this before we leave.
That's great.
We can do that.
Okay, so we'll hold that motion, okay? And, um, ba, 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 ba. I just wanted to apologize for being late to the regular meeting. I was at a, uh, community preservation meeting, and if it's okay, I'd like to go to new business item number two real quickly, just to give a report, um, on the Brown School Playground. Prior to this meeting, we had a, um, motion that was made, uh, by Mrs. Dunn, uh, that was unanimous on the Building and Grounds Committee to support, uh, the request by the Brown School Playground Committee recess for Randy, Randy La Manager, uh, to, um, seek funds from the Community Preservation Committee of $100,000 in order to complete the construction of the new Brown School Playground. Uh, that'll be in Randy's name. I attended the school, uh, the, uh, Community Preservation Committee meeting. Uh, there were a number of representatives there, Tom Gould, John Turco, Peter McGinn, um, Tom Rozignol, and Craig Welton, and, uh, I'm very pleased to say that the, uh, Community Preservation Committee approved the request. Um, in fact, they added a little bit extra money for, uh, some security cameras and, uh, some additional, um, items for the playground, and, uh, now they have raised, with that additional money, they've raised, uh, $200,000, uh, which is the number that they were seeking to make this, um, playground a reality. And this is an all-inclusive playground, uh, for, um, some, for our students who have special needs, our students who have autism, our students who, uh, may have some different disabilities, and this will be a playground, um, for all of our students, and this is a great moment. Um, I'm really happy about this, and it was very well received, as I expected, from the Community Preservation Committee, and we're hoping to break ground this spring, uh, once the weather allows, and, um, move forward with that construction pretty quickly. Um, but I wanted to recognize our Park and Rec Commission, our, um, Department of Public Works, they'll be assisting in this project as well, and I wanted to recognize specifically, uh, Haley Guarino and, um, Erin Thorpe, those are the co-chairs of the committee, and they put a great deal of work. I think all of you have been to, uh, different fundraising events that they've had in the past. They themselves, uh, with the help of some other committed teachers and parents from the Brown School community, Principal King, uh, and others, um, they were able to raise almost $100,000 on their own and sought this additional funds to complete this project. So, real excited. Um, Randy La Manager, as you know, passed away a couple of years ago, uh, puberty girl, and this will be, this pro, um, um, playground will be dedicated in her memory, and it will, it will help hundreds of kids, uh, for our city, and we're looking forward to that. Uh, so I just wanted to, um, let everybody know, I wanted to thank Dr. Lord, he wrote a letter in support, and also I spoke to the fact that the, uh, committee here was in full support of that request as well. So I'll keep everybody updated. Um, we're going to have another meeting of the committee, uh, to kind of, um, get ready for the next step, uh, but a lot of it's going to depend on the weather and, uh, moving forward, so I'll keep everybody updated. Uh, but it was a, a nice moment, and, um, I was glad I was able to be there, and thank you for allowing me to, to run over to that meeting real quickly. Okay, um, written communications. Um, I do not think we have any today, so let's move on to subcommittee reports. Uh, and I apologize, I was supposed to have today, um, to present, uh, the subcommittee assignments. There's really not much of a difference as opposed to last year, because I, I think we've done some good work, but I did have a couple of changes. I will have them for the next meeting. I apologize, I don't have those today. Um, but I will have those for the next meeting on January 28th. So we can run through, if there have been some subcommittee meetings, we can provide some reports. Uh, the first one is Education Subcommittee. Mr. Hockman?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, Finance, Mrs. Coppinder?
Thank you. Um, the Finance Committee, I don't have an official report, but I just wanted to take this opportunity, um, because I actually forgot to put it on the agenda, to talk to the committee about the possibility of, um, and with Mr. Scanlon's guidance, starting a scholarship fund under Kara's name, um, under our committee. A lot of people have reached out to me asking about where they can make donations, everybody wants to do something, and we all know how important Kara felt about education. Um, I, I've told so many people that we're going to look into it, I'll find out how we can accept your donations, I don't, we can discuss as a committee how to disperse it, whether it's at Student Government Day or, or however we want to do it, but through the chair to Mr. Scanlon, I wanted to ask him, you know, how we could set that up, and can we accept the donations through the city, through the school department, and if that's something that he sees, um, feasible to do.
Yeah, we can do it. Gotcha.
Yeah, is that, uh...
I'm sorry, I didn't...
No, is, um, we're just looking for some guidance. Mrs. Coppiner's proposed, uh, doing a, um, scholarship, setting up a scholarship in our, by the school committee in honor of Kara, um, and just something that we're seeking assistance from you and guidance as to how we can do that.
Sure. If there are advisories on it in terms of how to set up, it would require a vote to get established.
And we can accept the funds, we can set up an account through the school department to accept the donations and then disperse through a scholarship to a student. Okay. Um, so at this point in time, I'd like to make a motion that this committee set up a scholarship fund in Kara Mertag's name.
Second.
Okay. Further motion by Mrs. Coppinder, and thank you for that, and seconded by Mrs. Dunn. All in favor? Okay, so we'll take, uh, the next steps with that.
So can we, can Mr. Scanlon, can you come back at the next meeting and just let us know how it's going to run and how we can direct people to make donations, and maybe this committee can discuss the parameters of how we'll disperse it and, and those type of things?
Sure. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Coppinder. Okay, school safety. Mr. Olympio?
Nothing to report.
Athletics and wellness, Mr. Hockman?
Nothing at this time.
Quality and standards, Mrs. Dunn?
Nothing at the moment, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, do we have, do we need a second reading on the bicycle rider safety and responsibility?
We do, and I was just looking for the copy, and I don't have it in my packet, but I, oh, okay. Do you want mine? Here it is, Mr. Mayor. I got, I got these glasses four hours ago, I'm sorry. Okay, the paper with the two-inch letters on it, yes, I'd like to make a motion that the policy regarding bicycle rider safety and responsibility be approved after tonight's second reading, so moved.
Second. Further motion by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Olympio. On the motion, Mr. Hockman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I voiced my objection to this, not for the intent of the policy, um, I think it's important for students to wear bicycle helmets, but for the imposition it creates on our staff, and we happen to have our, um, president of the Teachers Federation here with us. The way I read this policy, it creates an obligation for staff members, uh, who see a student who's riding a bicycle to or from school, not on school property, not on school time, to, uh, they're obligated to, it's mandatory, to, um, make contact with the authorities to inform them that there's a student who's not wearing a bicycle helmet, and I frankly see that as a change in working conditions that hasn't been negotiated, and I'm not quite sure, um, that it's appropriate without going through that process. So for those reasons, I do plan on voting against this policy, again, not for the intent of the policy. I think it's a proper intent and appropriate for students to wear their helmets, and every student out there who's watching this committee meeting tonight, please wear your helmet when you're riding your bicycle. Um, so those are the reasons I'll be voting against this.
Thank you. Um, any other comments at this time, Mrs. Dunn?
Um, I'll be honest, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can understand what Mr. Hockman is saying, however, we are not putting this in with any expressed requirement for staff to, to report the students. Uh, actually, this is more for our, uh, actually, the administrators who are usually on, on duty when the students are arriving at the schools, and it does give them the, um, the authority to refer those students to the police if necessary. Uh, I would say that it is a voluntary requirement of people who see a student without their helmet, uh, but this is a safety issue, and this was actually brought to us by the Police Department, and putting it in, we, we hope to at least be able to encourage students to obey the law, uh, hope that they will ride safely, that when they enter our property, they are bound to drive and ride under the, the rules of the state of Massachusetts, and I look at it the same as if a parent arrives on our property and improperly drives through the parking lot or through the approaches, that the, the laws apply when someone hits our property line. So that, that was the, the intention. Um, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Any other thoughts or comments, Mr. Arnotis?
Yeah, just very quick, I agree with Mrs. Dunn. Um, just my interpretation of this is I don't see anywhere in here where it's mandated reporting. To me, it's more, you know, see something, say something type of thing. It doesn't, I don't see obligation directly pertaining to the staff in this, so as far as I'm concerned, you know, this is just a fine policy for us to add in to our student, parent-student handbook, so I'm comfortable with it.
Okay. Any other thoughts or comments, Mr. Hockman?
Just to Mr. Arnotis's point, it says, "Students failing to follow this policy shall be referred, when necessary, to the puberty police." Shall is an obligatory word. It's not may be reported, it shall be reported, and who are we presuming are going to report them?
Right, we're not directing anyone.
But, but then what is the policy, who is the policy directed at?
Well, it's going into the parent-student handbook, for all, that could be parents referring other students. I mean, we see that in the parking lot all the time.
But, are we, through the mayor, excuse me, sorry.
Sorry.
Uh, although I do try talking to Mr. Arnotis directly. Um, are we obligating citizens on the street? I mean, what authority is it that we think that we're expousing here? I mean, we're, we're a school committee. We have authority over property that is, um, owned by the school department that, that, that services students. We don't have, we want students, I agree with Ms. Dunn, uh, we want students to wear helmets, um, in the streets and in the parks and in the playgrounds and everywhere else to and from school. I just don't know that we have the authority to, to tell, whether it be staff or citizens, that students failing to follow this policy shall be referred to the PBD police. I just think it goes beyond what we do. If we wanna say that if a student's not wearing a helmet on school property, sure, I'm all for it. And I also agree with Ms. Dunn that this is an important subject. I'm not minimizing the, the consequences of not wearing a helmet when riding a bicycle or a skateboard or a scooter or, or anything else. It's, it's extremely important, and all of our, uh, the students that attend PBD schools, and adults, frankly, should be wearing safety equipment. I'm just, I'm just saying, this is, there's a mandatory obligatory word in there, it's shall, and that's what it means. And you're, and, and again, through the mayor to Mr. Arnotis, you know, you're, you're an aide for a state legislator. You write, you, you write or help write policy and, and statutes, and you, there's a big distinction between shall and may.
Oh, if I can.
I'm gonna, actually, I have a question.
Can I go one more?
All right.
Well, I just, we're gonna, I know we're kinda nitpicking here, but just through you. I mean, if, I know we're talking about shall, but then right after that is when necessary. So, it's not every time. It's not every time, it's when necessary. So, if we're gonna go word to word here, that's kind of the cop-out, I think. When necessary, and who's making the determination of when it's necessary.
Well, then, then why have the policy?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, point of information, Mr. Chairman.
If you're not wearing a helmet, we have to report it. So, when is the when necessary kick in? If they're wearing a helmet, there's nothing to report.
I've got, I have a comma and four words that'll take care of this.
Mr. Dunn, I...
Okay.
We'll go to you.
Follow all state and local laws and rules, comma, while on school property, including not limited to obeying the required rules. Then, anyone who is going to refer a student to the PBD police would be following a normal school process with the chain of command. When any teacher or adult sees something wrong, they report it to their principal, and the principal then takes care of that, or the designated administrator.
Yes. I vote yes.
There we go.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn.
So, with that amendment, I know Mr. Miko wanted to say something too.
Where we have, um, a couple of unions involved here, Unit A and Unit B, maybe we can, um, set up a meeting with both A and B and, and discuss this further. I, I just wanna make sure that we're clear and everyone is clear on it. I think it would, uh, so moved.
Okay.
All right, so, do you like to make that motion?
If we could, if we can make an...
Should we, should we meet with the union, or should we, if I may, should we, should we delay, postpone the vote on this?
Yeah.
And, and send it to the union for, for...
Through the chair, I, I think we should postpone the, the voting, talk to the unions, and, uh, and then bring it back. I mean, there isn't a timetable on this, right, do we?
I'll, I'll withdraw the motion.
So you withdraw the motion, you withdraw the motion, why don't we hold this till the next meeting?
Okay.
Um, and then allow, um, some more communication.
Absolutely, thank you.
And if I may, this was, this was put in merely to reflect good common sense with respect to what's been going on with our students who are driving very dangerously, and that has come back. Unfortunately, we've had one round of this, and it has come back. The students, you know, twenty or thirty at a time, are still driving dangerously. They are still not coming with helmets. If they have a helmet, they have it strapped to the handlebars where it's not gonna help when they do a wheelie on the yellow line on Lowell Street. So, I, I, we're trying, we're trying. People are, people are asking us for help, we're trying, and it's unfortunate that something that really should be just automatic, um, you know, that it, that it has to, has to take time. Thank you.
Well, just, we'll hold it till the next meeting, okay? All right, parent and student advisory boards, Mrs. Dunn, any, anything new to report?
Trying to schedule a parent advisory board meeting for this month, but no date yet, but it will be near the end of the month.
Thank you. Building and grounds, Mr. Miko?
Great, thank you, through the chair. Uh, we had a building and grounds meeting earlier prior to this meeting here, and, um, Building and Grounds Committee came up with a few recommendations, um, to re, basically, we have, um, a couple of deadlines that we have to meet here. There's an accelerated deadline through the MSBA for mid-February, and the, uh, the core program deadline, which is, um, a major renovation or new building, um, through the MSBAs in April. So, the recommendation for the, um, from the committee is to resubmit a statement of interest for both the center schools and the high schools, and the high schools, excuse me, and we can bring that to our, um, next meeting, and we can also schedule another, um, building and grounds meeting prior to our next meeting to...
Yeah, that'd be great.
Take care of that. And also, um, another recommendation is to resubmit through the accelerated program, uh, both the south and the west schools for, um, roofs. Um, and other than that, if, Mr. Mayor, if you have anything else to add to this, or anyone else...
Yeah, no, thank you for that report, Mr. Miko. Uh, I'm thinking, though, perhaps, um, because the accelerated repair submissions have to be made, I believe it's the second week in February, that we move forward with those two to present to the council, so that we, we would need a vote to move forward to the council with those requests. I think we schedule another building and grounds committee meeting to, um, continue the discussion and plan to move forward for the center school and PBD Veterans Memorial High School. I believe that submission for the core program is the first week of April.
April.
So, um, we, but I don't wanna certainly miss the accelerated repair deadline. I'd like to move forward with that, if that's agreeable to the, the members.
Yeah.
Okay. So, I think, um, a motion is made by Mr. Miko to move forward with the accelerated repair programs, some, uh, applications for the south school and the west school for new roofs.
Second.
Okay, for the motion by Mr. Miko, seconded by Mr. Hockman. On the motion, roll, call, vote, please.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Coppender?
Yes.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Great, and thank you, Mr. Miko. So, we can have, we'll set up a meeting for, um, January twenty-eighth?
Twenty-eighth.
Okay. Special, Special Education Parent Advisory Board, Mr. Olympia?
Yes, I'll be scheduling something for later this month, and also, too, I just wanna, I'm, I'm over the moon and ecstatic about the playground, and thank Ms. Garino, Ms. Thorpe, uh, for all their hard work and everybody involved. I know there's a lot of parents that attend this subcommittee, and, uh, it's just gonna, it's a great day, a great night, and, uh, yeah, it's just, I wanna thank everybody again.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Terrific. Uh, City Council Legislative Delegation, Mr. Arnotis?
Thank you. Um, I just, to let you all know, Counselor Charis and I are working to get a date for a meeting this month. We haven't, um, firmed anything down yet, but that will be posted, but we're hoping to get something in for this month.
Great, thank you, Mr. Arnotis. Okay, we did have new business, the MSBA applications. I think Mr. Miko addressed that. Um, I don't have anything to add, and then also the new business on number two, we took care of that report as well. Uh, anything final before we break, Mr. Hockman?
I'm just gonna make a motion to go into executive session with the intent of coming back to regular session for the sole purpose of reporting out on the, um...
Lunch.
Lunch program, uh, negotiation, or, great, impact bargaining.
Great, terrific, um...
Second.
You've heard the motion by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mrs. Dunn. All in favor? Okay, great, thank you. So, I'd like to call the meeting back to order. Mr. Hockman, you're making a motion that we report out of executive session and go back into, or go back into...
Executive session with the intent of not returning to public session.
Okay, so...
Actually, we're just coming back into regular session.
Yep.
At the end, we'll make that motion.
Then make that motion. So, now we're just making a motion to go back into full session, um, for a quick report.
So moved.
For the motion by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Olympia. All in favor? Um, we entered into executive session to review the documents regarding the change in lunch schedule. Um, Dr. Lord explained, uh, the changes, um, answered some questions, and the committee voted unanimously to accept and approve that new lunch schedule. Uh, motion made for approval by Mr. Miko, seconded by Mr. Arnotis. All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Now, Mr. Hockman, you're making a motion?
Making a motion to go into executive session with the intent of not returning to public session.
Second.
All righty, cool, good.
Let's go.